Three items listed today, we're going to ask people that's interested to talk for the four item and the ones that's not interested, talk against it. And we will talk about the property tax bill that raised a little bit towards the end also if we need to. And then we'll adjourn for our regular meeting. And we'll take action on all three of these items today at our regular meeting. So if you got a copy of the agenda here, we have a conditional use permit request here from Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Heather? Uh, Jason, which one of y'all want to tell us why you want to build a chicken house?
We just want to build a chicken house.
Well, come up here to the podium. I don't want to embarrass you. I know you can talk. So give your name to the clerk. So go over record.
Heather Maxwell.
And tell us about this condition. You've been to the planning zoning commission and requesting this. Tell us, tell us a little bit more about it.
We have 96 acres on Murphy Road and we just want to build two pullet houses. So our, we don't feel like they will interfere with any, anybody or anything in the community. Just that our location is a perfect location for houses and we just want to jump into it and get it going.
Do you have an idea what company you're going to pull it?
Sir, it's Pilgrim's out of Athens.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk positive about it? Do we have anybody that's present want to say why we should not approve these poultry houses, two pullet poultry houses? Let's move to A. Let's move to B, request for a conditional use permit. Matthew Duck? All right. You want to come up and tell us why you're applying for application under the permit to construct four chicken houses? Tell us, give your name, please.
Matthew Dyke. I have 56 acres on Bear Creek Road.
I'm sorry.
I have 56 acres on Bear Creek Road.
Yes, sir.
And just like to build four pullet houses. My integrator will be CWT.
Any questions, gentlemen? No questions? Uh, what company are you planning on growing for?
CWT. CWT.
Okay.
I'm assuming you sound.
Thank you. Do we have anybody that wants to talk against building these chicken houses that's here Here none, we'll move to number C here, request for a conditional use permit. Here we have Joseph Mooney. Come up, Joseph, and tell us a little bit about what your operation is about. I see that the planning zoning put some conditional uses and so forth on there. All right, go ahead.
I'm Justice Mooney. Request a conditional permit to basically build kit, uh, point cars and a residence in building on my property with about 7.4 acres. Um, closest neighbor is 320 feet away, just across the road. Uh, the other one was about 370. Um, we're not going to be doing anything very loud. Um, it's not, none of the cars be running. We're not doing any, uh, like oil changes or anything like that. It's all in use of, um, we don't really fabricate any parts, so we don't think it'll bother our neighbors at all. So it's about 10,000 square foot shop already on the property set up to do this. Perfect. This is a perfect time, perfect place.
Do you have all the parts shipped in to you so you can put the body together?
I do, but most everything will be shipped in by FedEx or UPS, small parts. Um, I pick up the body of the car ourselves. I have 28 of the trailer, I mean, three of them at a time, we'll only have to probably every six weeks. Um, and the chassis, we have a gentleman in Lula, Jordan breaks into us. Uh, we break through one or two at a time. So we might do eight or 10 a year as a part-time business for us. Uh, business has been in business for over 10 years now. Um, it's just me and my dad and employees. We're not going to have a storefront, uh, people that want to visit to see the, uh, projects, uh, by appointment only. So not going to be people in and out of my driveway business.
Commissions, y'all got any questions about this? Well, thank you, sir. Do I have anybody that wants to talk negative about the permit? Well, we're going to adjourn, uh, not adjourn, but just, uh, take a break and then, uh, we If anybody comes in and wants to talk either way, we'll do that. And then we'll have our regular meeting at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Now let's hear it. Millers rate?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Jason, we'll point out, we did have, oh, now the miller's rate of property taxes. Uh, so I guess we, we've been looking at the miller's rate and so forth and see if anybody wants to mention anything about the miller's rate of the taxes. Property taxes. Give them some opportunity to come in and talk and cause they'll have another opportunity too down the road. We'll leave that open also if anybody wants to come in and talk about the property taxes. All right, we'll stand, uh, on a break here unless somebody else wants to come in, so feel free to mingle and talk, but remember a social distance. I understand the virus has increased in Franklin County recently, so we need to make sure we guard against spreading it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On this special occasion that we've gone into the commission meeting, I'm going to call it the order. Appreciate you turning it out. As you know, we always start off with an implication and place allegiance to the flag. So we've changed month to month and I'm going to ask Commissioner West if he'll leave us and send the implication and place the allegiance. Please stand.
That is right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to come here, Lord, and to do the blessings and, and the business of this county, Lord. Lord, we thank you for the rain that you've sent our way today, Lord. And, Lord, most importantly, we thank you for that we build Garner, Lord, that even though we were only lucky enough to have him for just a short time, Lord, we thank you for that time that you blessed us with him, Lord. We thank you for the impact that he made on everybody that he come into contact with, Lord. Lord, we just lift up his wife and, and his parents and all of his, his fellow officers, Lord, and friends, Lord, and just ask that you just continue to comfort them, Lord, continue to look over them and, and just continue to guide them right now, Lord. Lord, we thank you for every law enforcement officer, every first responder that's here today, Lord, that, that you would just continue to protect them, Lord, and continue to bless them, Lord, and, and continue to look over them as they come out to protect us, Lord. Father, I just pray that you would just help us to do all of this in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. As you notice, our guest tonight, it's good to have, I'm assuming you, Ms. Garner, and you have with us. Appreciate y'all being here tonight on this special occasion. We all live Franklin County hurting and praying, but we want to welcome each of you here tonight. And we have several that we'd like to recognize and we have so many, I'm sure we won't recognize everybody, but you might have some in your department that you would like to recognize. We do have Senator Wilkinson. Appreciate you being here on this occasion. We have, uh, naturally the sheriff, Steve Thomas. Steve Thomas, look like you brought a good crew with you. Do you want to try to name them all?
No, no, no.
Appreciate them turning it out in this occasion. Mr. Terry Harris is with us also. He's the EMS director. Mr. Harris, you got any members of your department you'd like to recognize or? And we got Scott O'Barr. He's our car man. Scott is here. Thanks for being here, Scott. And then we have Barrett Thornton. He's here, that, he's the president, I believe, of the fire association. Appreciate him being here. And we have, uh, Ken Everson unable to be here. He's, uh, his thoughts and prayers are with us tonight. He, he sends those, but was tied up and unable. We have our commission, uh, tax commissioner, Bobby Martin. Bobby Martin, you got anybody else you'd like to, you appreciate you being here, Mr. Martin? And we, do we have Mr. Little? There's Little, I think he sends his thoughts and greetings and he also had a conflict tonight. Mr. The mayor of Franklin Springs, Mr. Tom Wack Wilson is here. I saw him earlier. And I believe, uh, the former mayor, Lee Paul is here. Appreciate you being here. And y'all have a council member with you?
I'm sorry?
Who you have with you tonight?
Yes, well, let me introduce Officer Freddie Wilder from our police department and, uh, of course, this up and coming young politician, uh, that, uh, that may be a candidate for, for mayor.
Good. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mayor Jordan, didn't see him, but I believe it's Corporal Davis from Rosson Police Department here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here, Representative Rosson. You have anybody else you'd like to?
Nobody else who's able to make it, sir.
Thank you. Also, the city of Rosson is having a meeting tonight, so the mayor of Rosson and all the council members and a lot of those are tied up and unable to make it tonight. We have Kyle Foster, who is District Two elect chairman. Will be sitting up here in January. So welcome, appreciate you being here, uh, with us tonight. And we have a lot of other distinguished people and I appreciate you coming out. It laid upon our hearts to do something in this tragic situation. And so we have a proclamation that we would like to read tonight and present to William Garner's wife. I'm going to call on, uh, Dr. Maxwell, if you read that proclamation, please.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Franklin County, Georgia honoring the life and legacy of Deputy William Bill Garner. Whereas Sheriff Deputy William Bill Garner was tragically killed in the line of duty while serving the Franklin County community on July 19, 2020. And whereas Deputy Garner was below the husband, son, and father to some very special four-legged children. And whereas Deputy Garner began his law enforcement career after attending and graduating the police academy in 1998 and served several communities in North Georgia. And whereas Deputy Garner began his service to the Franklin County community on June the 12th, 2019. And whereas Franklin County honors and respects the law enforcement, first responders, emergency workers, and other public servants who so diligently and selflessly serve to make our community more livable. And whereas there is no greater sacrifice an officer can make for their community than to give his own life. And whereas it is fitting and proper that the governing authority and county in which Deputy Garner was serving at the end of his watch pay homage and tribute to his memory, his legacy of service, and his ultimate sacrifice serving his community. And whereas Franklin County expresses profound sympathy to the family, fellow officers, friends, and loved ones of Deputy Garner, and therefore be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners hereby honors the life and legacy of Sheriff Deputy William Bill Garner and hereby pays its highest tribute and respects to the service and sacrifice of Deputy Garner. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the chairman to sign this resolution and the clerk to certify it and spread it upon the minutes of Franklin County for posterity and to transmit a copy of the resolution to the family of Deputy Garner on this third day of August, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do I have a motion that we accept that resolution?
I move that we accept.
Okay, uh, Wester makes that motion. We have a second here from Dr. Maxwell. Any discussion? All in favor? All five votes for the resolution? So please stand before we present this resolution. We want to have a silence, just a moment of silence where everybody can say what they'd like to say. And then I will bring us out of that silence. Our maker, our God, we ask thee for thy guidance. We ask thee for thy comfort. And may you be with us each day that we go. In Jesus' name, amen. We would like to come down, commissioners, let's go down and present this to, to Garner. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Franklin County, we appreciate what Deputy William Garner does for Franklin County. We appreciate his life and we appreciate you being here tonight and let you know that we thank you dearly.
Thank you.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess before we continue. Do you want to say by regular meeting? Will you stand? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started back and if you have agenda, or if you don't have one, pick up one back here on the table. And you see we're down to number four item on our agenda for tonight. We will go right into the number four there where we have four minutes that we need to approve that took place on those dates that's listed there. Commissioners, y'all have had the opportunity that was sent out by the clerk to read the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as read?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as read.
Thank you, Commissioner. Franklin made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. He makes the second. Any discussion about the minutes, gentlemen? Here none, all in favor? Minutes been approved, 5-0. Now we'll move to public comment. Always ask for public comment from the citizens. If we have anyone tonight that'd like to come up and make a public comment, please come to the podium and give your name to the clerk. Here none, we'll move to the next item for discussion. Request for a conditional permit. We just had a public hearing here. We were hearing from the Maxwells that interested in building two, what you call pullet houses. So I'm going to ask our planning zoning person if he elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yes, appreciate it, Chairman Bridges. So as you heard earlier in the public hearing, Heather Maxwell has applied for a two-house poultry farm off of Murphy Road. I went out there to a site visit. There's very few tracts of land in Franklin County, I would say, are perfect for poultry houses. This is one of them, as way back, very end of a dirt road. Uh, the site plan shows a, a house that's about 600 foot from the front of those chicken houses, but that house is uninhabitable. It's, the, the, the Maxwell plant on tearing it down. So there won't be, there really won't be a, a house within 1,000 feet of, of that, proposed farm and it'll be surrounded by thick vegetation all the way around. Um, the planning commission heard it and reviewed it and, uh, they approved it and they, they didn't add any additional conditions to it. Um, as with any conditional use permit, it's, it's approved based on the fact that nothing in that, in that, uh, application changes. Uh, so my recommendation is to approve, uh, that two-house pullet farm off of Murphy Road as, as presented.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion? We approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation from our planning zoning commission on this conditional land use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester. Makes a motion. We approve that request. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. Second, any discussion about this, gentlemen?
Is, is it no problems with the road? Is it a county road or?
It's a county maintained road.
Okay, it's in good shape.
Yeah.
And frankly?
It's, it's good.
Any other questions? Here none, all in favor? We got a 5-0 vote to approve that. Thank you. We'll move to the B item here, request for a conditional use permit. Also, uh, Mr. Scott, would you please, uh, tell us about that?
Yes, so, uh, Matthew Dyke applied for a four-house pullet farm off of Bear Creek Road. This is another excellent tract of land for, uh, poultry houses, especially pullet houses. Pullet houses have the least effect on adjoining properties. Um, he was approved for a two-house breeder farm back in October of 2019. Uh, you know, he, he went through the process and was approved for, however, since that he did get approved by his integrator for pullet houses and decided he would rather do four pullet houses instead of two breeder houses. Um, it is off of a county maintained road. There is a good, uh, uh, tree line, vegetative buffer all the way around the property. Uh, the site plan indicates he's going to meet all the setbacks and there shouldn't be any erosion on any, uh, joint property. Uh, so it's my recommendation to the planning commission and with the planning commission's recommendation to y'all to approve, uh, this application for a four-house pullet farm with no additional, uh, conditions attached, as with any of them, as was said earlier, that's pending that nothing changes in the application or the site plan.
Thank you. You've heard, uh, the report there concerning these. Do I have a motion that will go with approving this request?
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for Matthew Dyke on the...
Thank you. Dr. Maxwell makes the motion that we do approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Swell, second that motion. Any discussion, gentlemen? Here none, all in favor? 5-0 vote to approve those four houses. Now, uh, Mr. Scott, if you will, tell us about the conditional use permit here. I believe it had some conditionals along with that. Go ahead and tell us.
It did. So, uh, Joseph Mooney, as you heard from earlier, is requesting a conditional use permit for a home occupation. Uh, his home occupation is going to involve the assembly of kit cars, just the body of the kit cars. Uh, he's going to be doing on a 7.4 acre tract of land. It already has a, uh, it's a little over 10,000 square foot shop on it, which is the applicant indicated that all work is going to be conducted inside that shop building. Uh, it's going to be very, very low noise. It's not going to be, uh, any kind of automotive repairs. It's not going to be any drivetrains. It's not going to be any transmission, anything like that associated with these cars. Um, he has gotten a company to basically mold these, the body pieces together and they'll be shipped to him and he will assemble them on site. Uh, as he indicated, it's supposed to be a very low volume, eight to 10 per year. It's a side, uh, side business for him and his, and his dad. Given that information, there was, there was a few conditions that we, we wanted to ensure so that no, uh, you know, adverse effects are, are, are stemmed from this home-based occupation. So the, the, the recommendation from the planning commission was that the applicant does not allow commercial traffic. Uh, so any commercial vehicle should not be allowed to, uh, deliver or ship said, uh, kits once they're complete. It will be coming off of Highway 59, which is a state highway. He does not have a commercial driveway, so that's, that's why, uh, that condition is, is in there. It indicates he has no intentions of having any kind of commercial traffic and there would be no issue with that. Um, the second condition is that, you know, it, it is, uh, property right there on Highway 59. You can't see it directly from that road. Uh, we don't want this home-based occupation to become a nuisance, uh, on the county, so the property must be maintained in a neat and orderly manner as it is currently being maintained. Uh, as stated, he's, the applicant has said that all work will be done inside that shop building. We don't see that being an issue. Um, the third, uh, the third applicant, the third condition is there, there is, there is some neighbors close by, not, not terribly close, I think 320 feet across the road is the closest neighbor and then through a wood line, it's about 307 feet to the nearest neighbor. So, uh, we just say that, that business needs to be conducted during normal, reasonable business hours. Uh, you know, no beating and banging at 2:00 and nobody or anything that disturb, uh, any adjoining property owners. Uh, the fourth condition is, uh, because it is, you know, it, it is involved vehicles. Uh, per our zoning regulations, a home-based occupation cannot involve automotive repairs. So we are attaching, we do recommend attaching the condition that there's no automotive repair that goes on here. This is going to, uh, you know, you're not tuning engines, you're not repairing engines, transmissions, none of that stuff. You're just simply assembling the, the body for this vehicle. Um, and then it's shipped off to other locations for final assembly of the drivetrain. Uh, so those are the four conditions that were recommended being attached to this conditional use permit for, uh, the home-based occupation.
So the planning zoning is recommending approval then with those four conditions?
Yes, yes, sir. Approve, approval with those four conditions.
Okay. You've heard the planning zoning recommendation, approval with those four commissioners. Do I have a motion that we'll sell?
Make a motion that we accept, uh, as recommended by the planning's on board with the four conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Swell has made a motion that we accept that. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Dr. Maxwell made a second to that. Any discussion, gentlemen?
And the applicant is good with the, the four conditions?
Yes.
I have one question. I could work on my own vehicles, right?
Yes, personally, again, it's associated with the, with the, with the business program. I don't want to do the same. Right.
Okay, that's a good question. Any other questions? All in favor? Well, 5-0 vote for all these people that attend tonight to, to work. Go back and get your chicken houses ready. Go get your automobiles ready. Uh, appreciate you bringing that to the county and we appreciate what you do to the county. The last item that were listed right here is the library funding. We discussed that at the last meeting. We talked in terms, uh, the library was looking for additional funds since the school system found out that they're not supposed to be contributing and so forth. It was approximately $21,000. So we talked in terms of possibility of meeting a third of that and we've been looking at the budget and so forth to see if we could fund another $7,000 in addition to what we already funded to the library, because our two libraries that we have in the county is very, very important to our citizens and so forth. So we put this on the agenda feeling personally that we can spare $7,000 for such great benefit. So I'm going to ask for a motion if we got any commissioners willing to make a motion that we move forward and, and contribute another $7,000. Our, our county manager has already done modification to the budget and so forth in order that we could take care of that. So do we have a, a motion that we could go ahead and add $7,000 to our library program?
I'd like to make a motion that we prove the $7,000 as we budgeted. I believe it benefits not only the students, uh, in our county, but everyone in our county to have a healthy, uh, library and it is a great service.
Good. We got a, we got a motion from Commissioner Swell. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Dr. Maxwell will second that motion. Any discussion, gentlemen? Here none, all in favor? We got a 5-0 vote to go ahead and contribute what they requested of us and, uh, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and I think that is good. We'll move down to announcements and looking at the announcements there, I believe, Labor Day falls on September, uh, the Monday we're supposed to meet. I'm optional. I'll be willing to meet, but I believe it's been mentioned maybe moving that to another date. Somebody tell me what date that we possibility need to go ahead so our clerk can be alert on what taking place in September. I believe September the 7th was the date it's supposed to be, that's Labor Day. What's the wishes of the commission? Somebody tell me.
I recommend that we look to the following Monday, the 14th.
I recommend that we vote to the following Monday, the fourteenth.
Okay. We got a recommendation from Commissioner Swell that we go ahead and move that exactly one Monday. Uh, do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
We got a couple of seconds. Uh, any discussion about the following Monday, what's the fourteenth? On the Monday, the fourteenth.
There's no football that weekend, so I think we are...
That's right, that'll work. All right, all in favor? That was easily done, so we'll publicize that to the paper and, uh, so forth, that we'll meet on the fourteenth, or the seventh, due to Labor Day falling on that. Now I'm gonna open it up, start with Mr. Wester down here. Mr. Wester, you got anything you want to add? Thank you. Mr. Swell?
Just, just want to follow up. We really, and I know some of the people have left, but we really appreciate the sacrifice that Officer Garner made. That's a gift that we can't, you know, we can't ever repay. Uh, but we, it really brings home the fact that every day we ask our public safety workers to put their lives on the line. They never know what to expect, what's gonna happen. And that's a huge, that's a huge responsibility, and we appreciate that very much.
I appreciate all the employees of Franklin County. It doesn't matter what department they're in, they have a rough job. So, I appreciate them all.
Thank you. You know, every citizen might not really, it don't, don't, the, the contribution that our employees make here, uh, law enforcement, nine-one-one, and all them. But what's incredible is the fact that they are conscious of making sure that the citizens get their money's worth because it's coming from taxpayer dollars. And that's what I have found is really nice for the, uh, employees of Franklin County to give it all. And, and thank goodness, we, we have so many good employees in Franklin County, it makes us strong. Any other announcements? Hearing none, do I have a motion we adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Dr. Maxson makes a motion, second?
I'll second, Jim.
Thank you. Mr. Wester makes a motion. We all vote one hundred percent.